So now, because they can't beat me, they gotta do this smear campaign to convince public opinion that I'm bad for them.
Should we say two elections? You were first elected in 2021?
No, 2013 was my first election for trustee. I was a trustee. I sat where they are. That's why I know the law.
All the council. Elected mayor 2021.
Yes.
Terms four years?
Yes.
Okay. Plans of running for reelection?
I'm running for both my seats. And I'm gonna win them.
So and when is the election for Thornton Township?
2025.
So those elections are the same time?
They are.
I could not be here breathing and be comfortable if I was really as bad as they was making it. You know, nobody could be around me. So for me to be this calm, I must have some kind of inner peace. And my inner peace is knowing that once everybody take the time to really see what type of person I am, you'd be surprised that I stuck around this long. I have to make the life that I do live as happy as I can and try to do the best with what I have. You know, live the best life I can live, be as happy as I can be. Nothing is perfect for anybody.
Boys, I swear, I think I figured it out. You know why they don't want us redneck brothers and sisters and the hood brothers and sisters getting along? You know why? Because we'd be unstoppable. I'm telling you right now, we would shut shit down.
Alright, alright. Blessings, blessings. Welcome, welcome. I know I said next time y'all was gonna see my face, but guess what? I think my light is still messed up. Honestly. Let me see. I'm gonna put myself on the screen. Y'all gonna be like, what you got going on over there? Let me see if I can get myself together real quick. I hope you guys are having an amazing, amazing day. I came on because I just found out we were having a meeting tonight. So you know I'm gonna be creeping. Now y'all know what happened to me the last time that I tried to do these meetings from my regular page and what ended up happening. So today, we're gonna creep around, see who has it live, and we're going to react to it, okay? Before we get to that, let me see, can I get myself on the screen? Oh my God. I said bump it. Let's do this. I missed y'all. They've been working me like a Hebrew slave. Yes, I've been up in a dirty jersey. Let me see, y'all. Let me see. Let me see. Dag, hold on. Can y'all see me? Wait a minute. I think 'cause I don't have a background. Hold on. Let me see something. I'm trying to see, can I let y'all see my face right now? Let me move my virtual background. And let me see if I could blur. Yeah, I know I'm working on my presentation. Please hit the like button. We're gonna go through a little bit of Dalton and Thornton's Dalton Politics page. One second. Let's see what we got going on. Camera. There we go. Hey! And I got the scarf on like, whoa, y'all ain't got no back behavior, y'all. Hey, I missed y'all. I am not studio ready. I don't care, but I'm here for it. So I just wanted to pop on my screen and let y'all know I missed y'all. I almost got it together. Almost got it together. Love you guys. I'm getting off the screen. I'm not camera ready today, but I'm a real person. Y'all know I love to be on the screen talking shit, making faces. I missed y'all. So what we about to do is get to this Facebook group real quick. I got my eyes on a few people's live who is going live today to see what we're gonna be able to capture. Make sure that we're gonna be able to share this broadcast with you guys. Let's put Facebook on the thing, 'cause I don't want y'all to have a blank screen. So let's get to it. They're gonna basically be addressing some of the things that they were supposed to address. I definitely these lawsuits that they did not address prior. Okay, so as you see, they're gonna be doing Friends of Tiffany A. Hanyer. That's something that we talked about, God. We did talk about that. Friends of Tiffany A. Hanyer, that nonprofit organization that she has set up that's abroad. And we did connect it to Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams. And that is the housing director, okay? We know that his ass is capping for her allegedly because he may have some ties that he wanna keep tight. I don't know if he think Hanyer is going to... It says, "I didn't realize it was another township meeting." Thank you, Jabar. I wanna share the shout out to Jabar. I love you. I'm gonna tell you, I've been lost in the sauce since I've been up here in Jersey. It's been a lot of things going on with my family, my personal situation. So the adjustment was very hard. And Jabar, you've been radada. I love you for keeping me posted. I guess I'm keeping y'all posted today. So we're gonna see how this meeting actually starts all. So yes, we do have one. They called it today, considered this an add to my Superman Saga playlist, which is released to the public if you guys want to watch it. So you have a page, Superman Saga? You said super mayor. Okay. If you have a page, Jabar, let me know. I'm gonna check it out, okay? I thought I looked, so if you had a page, let me know, okay? Because you know I support. Hey, H, how are you? What's up? Blessing. You have a playlist. Okay. We'll check out that playlist. I thank you if you added me to your playlist, too. You are fucking amazing. And I also have a few Dalton residents that's anonymous. And I wanna say thank you to you guys for keeping me posted as well, okay? So they're gonna go over the Gospel Fest. I got quiet, 'cause I heard about that Gospel Fest. Somebody supposed to be at that Gospel Fest down there, around down there. I wonder how that went. House Fest, bingo. Tech Savvy. So approval for the upcoming event. So it looks like, does it look like they're about to start a trend of having to approve the events that they're having? Does it look like something is going on? It looks like they're trying to change up the protocol right now. Let me see. Live. I hope somebody make it down there to actually get this. I know I have boots on the ground, but not really boots on the ground. So I'm hoping I'll be able to play catch up today and catch somebody live, okay? So let's get finished, go back through this. Hold on one second. This is, who else we got going on? So Lawrence versus Thornton Township, Thrash versus Thornton Township, and Dukes versus Thornton Township. And I want to apologize to you guys that I was not able to get into the read with you guys. My goal was to actually go into it tomorrow, 'cause I did not know it was gonna be a meeting today. So I guess what I'm gonna try to do is make sure that I set things up for tomorrow. And if we have time and it don't get too late tonight, we'll try to go into it. I wanna get into Ms. Duke's lawsuit, so we can get into some details a little bit. Because I know there's still questions about what happened, you know? So I would assume that that lawsuit is gonna have details. I tried not to touch it too much, but I said, fuck it. I'm gonna touch it. Yeah, that's what I was looking for, too, the Lanson Journal, but you know, hold on. Let's check them out. I don't know. I know the last time they was not happy with us. Our ass was being loud as hell in the background. But then I left a message under the Lanson Journal page just to give them a shout out and tell them thank you for all they do, because I do know that is not easy. So let... This was their last video. We checking out their page. Let's see. They don't usually go live a lot, though. They do? They go live a lot? They don't really go live a lot. I would hope they do. They don't have a lot of live videos, so let's see what else they got. Hold on. I'm creeping, y'all. I'm creeping while I'm over here. You know it's hard out here for a pimp. They tried to put me on the X list, yeah? And I won't take that shit. I'ma creep till I get the win. Let me stop. I'm talking. I'm just talking shit, y'all. I miss y'all. You know, I gotta be politically correct every other damn day of the week. So when I don't have to be politically correct, I'm cracking jokes and I'm having some damn fun. That's what I do here. So I looked on their page. It's not up yet. I'm also creeping on Reality Check page. I should look for Burgundy Blue. Check her page out, give her a shout out. Like, girl, there she go. There she go. Let me see. This is Thornton Township Chit Chat. Let's see if her ass is gonna go live down there. Or she waiting for... Are we all waiting for people to go live? I'm checking out her page. You know I be creeping. Everybody's still talking right now, but they're doing the same thing I'm doing. Agenda recap. While we doing the agenda recap, what else they said? The ordinance, a motion to approve the amended ordinance with 24-005 to regulate events, expenditures, and budget approvals for Thornton Township Cook County. That is A. They wanna implement another ordinance, y'all. This one says, "A motion to approve an amended ordinance to 24-006 to establish the retail credit card net 30 policy for Thornton Township." Now, this is what I'm gonna try to get more details into, 'cause I wanna see what they're trying to implement. I hope they talk about it today. And the first thing that they did was smart with... Do this. What the hell they said? Let me go to this group. What did they say? They said Tiffany want her motherfucking name on everything but the credit cards. Ooh, that lady looks scary. Let me find out what they had said. Let me pull it up. You know I be creeping down the door. I missed a lot of Dalton politics. But let me see the posts. They said something to the nature that Tiffany wants her name over everything except for the credit cards. And someone had mentioned that they believe that she's trying to basically make Mr. Hunt the fall guy. Make Mr. Hunt the fall guy for her shit. You see what I'm saying? If she's not connected to it and he's the one that's spending the money, what do you think is going to happen? They're gonna put the pressure on him. It is not... It's not to say that she won't be implemented as far as Rico, but if her hands are not on it per se, directly, that's how she tries to... How can I say? To do like a three degrees of separation? Does that make sense? That's how... She's criminal minded. It says Lanson Journal always be there. It's just that the guy got another job. Berg is up right now. What is Reality Check TV? I don't know. Is that their name? You know I be getting people's names dead wrong. You know who Reality Check TV is? It's the guy that be in his car acting like a pastor. No disrespect, okay? I know y'all trying to love me, but Grace Lee always coming out with some shit. But that's who Reality Check TV is. That's the gentleman be in his car talking about... Is it up for the fakes? Let me show y'all who Reality Check is. I'm not messing with them. I'm not fucking with them. I just told y'all. Let me see. God said, "Don't put that up there. Reality Check TV show cargo." That's who it is. That's his name. Shout out to him, 'cause he do be there at the meetings. Let me just put him up there. I don't care if I be cracking jokes on people. Fuck that. I'm keeping real. He be putting that work. That nigga be there all the time. And no... Let me hide my shit. I can't even fucking hide my shit. Let me get off this page. They go, "Don't worry, I got another page." I was hiding. That's one of my backup pages. They be finding my shit. I don't know if they gonna block me on all of it, but I use my backup page now. So I just showed my backup page. They probably mess around, try to block me, but it's okay. If they do out, I got another one. How about that? Yeah, that's Reality Check TV. Y'all could check him out, because he does... He do be out there at the meeting now. His other content, I ain't got nothing to do with. He be talking about, "Time is up..." What he be saying? "Time is up for the haters and hypocrites." He be in his car on that heavy shit. So let's see. Usually, when he's out there, though, he catch the broadcast from outside, so... Maybe he don't know. You know what I'm saying? I don't know. Alright, I wanted to find the post. What is this? Thornton Township Hall 333. What is this? This is the... This Vivian. Go ahead, Vivian. All my life, I've been driving all my life. So that was Vivian post. She was highlighting that the meeting is today. Also, Friends of Tiffany Hanyer, that definitely get Miss Vivian pissed the fuck off, because you know what she done did. She done lied to that lady or tell her she was gonna help her with her bills and stuff and didn't do a damn thing, okay? Didn't do a damn thing. So let's see what else we got going down this yellow brick road. Shout out to Miss Vivian. Also, shout out to Alexis Wilson. They are, Miss Vivian and Miss Cara is also working together alongside a few other... Other people, like me and other people, to get this story back into the limelight. This story, it is the Alexis Wilson story, where she was wrongfully unalive by Dalton Police. And we are pushing to change the narrative. I had a few people under my video, and I will say it, that had said, "Well, I was gonna sign, but till I looked at the story, I'm not signing." So on the 27th yesterday, I made a post, so you guys can get in detail what happened. I connected the video where we went back and reflect on more footage that showed the officer not being dragged, that showed the aggressive actions of Officer Perez, okay? And also, I wanna make an announcement. Now, this is a possibility, and I'm still doing my research, 'cause I was doing research just a few minutes before this shit started. I was like, "Oh shit, it's a Thornton meeting. The fuck? Why didn't I notice?" I was researching the officers out there in Dalton and their history, okay? So with more information that I find, I'm gonna be able to give y'all more comprehensive breakdown of the... How can I say? The tragic events that they are involved in. How many people have been... How can I say? Life has been tragically changed behind these officers' behavior. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm acquiring about nine of them at least. And nine of the officers that I'm acquiring about is directly related to the Alexis Wilson case as well as the kill shot case, okay? And we're gonna be bringing that to you soon. But the update allegedly is Officer Perez was allegedly working at Oak... Let me make sure. I think it was Oakwood. They gonna kick my butt. Let me pull up the... 'Cause he's like, "You always say the wrong thing." I'm like, "Damn, I go state to state. Just bear with me. It's hard outside for a pimp." I be all over. Hold on one second. This one says, "We are in a small room. It was me there." Critical Smoker is here. Okay. Thank you. Let's see if we can get on Critical Smoker page, y'all. They say Critical Smoker is there. Alright. Hold on, y'all. I'm getting a little distracted. It was just a little... My hooker. My beautiful. I wish they, you know... You know, I have a few people that I talk to in the background, but they're afraid to talk. Like, they don't wanna be in the... "Oh geez, does, even though Critical Smoker don't like me and I don't like him. It's all for informational and educational purposes only. Let's put it up there. Critical Smoker ass. What happened to my picture?" Look at that. No, I was looking for this other picture, y'all, before I share his shit. Before I share his shit. He's not up here. For informational and educational purposes only. Y'all know what I'm about to do. I'm about to share Critical Smoker shit, okay? We gonna do a Grace Levi style. I love y'all, 'cause I know y'all be wanting to hear me talk. Talk the talk. And we gonna break it down. And I'm not gonna interrupt while the meeting is going, because I want you guys to hear. But then I'm gonna take notes, and we're gonna come back, and we going, "Hit it, hit it, hit it." Shout out to Critical Smoker. If you want to hear this without my commentary, go to his page. He's... Oh, I'm unblocked. That's my... Ooh, shout out to Critical Smoker. Ya unblocked my ass, huh? Look at you. Alright, so he's live. This is his feed. You know, I have to give respect to where respect is due. But you know, we do things a little different over here, okay? We break it down a little... Look at Vivian right there already, ready to kick ass.
Sponsor of this broadcast.
It's Critical Smoker.
Brother, I appreciate it.
That's Critical Smoker talking right there. So we already got it on the screen, y'all. Hit the like button. We gonna have fun tonight. I missed y'all. Shout out to my beautiful who inboxed me. I'm about to tell her, "Thank you for the info," 'cause I was over here. I literally jumped on, didn't know who was gonna lie, but I said, "Fuck it. Let's do this." Okay? 'Cause I actually wanted to update this, too. While we're waiting, let me look into... Just to make sure that I'm gonna be giving y'all the right information about Officer Perez. Officer Perez was one of the officers that actually attacked Alexis Wilson. He was the one that punched her and did all the crazy stuff. And right now, he was hired... Let me just put this thing up. He was hired. I wanna say the right one, 'cause I be messing up. I'm gonna keep it real. Let me put it up there. Perez. It's like Oakwood. What is it? It is Ryan Perez. I remember these names. Hey! Alright, so let me just... You know what? It's so... Okay, maybe it was my computer earlier. I was trying to get on the computer. Yes, so he's at Oak Forest Police Department. I'm gonna put this up there for you guys while this meeting. We're still waiting for them to get started. This police officer who is abusive, not only was he involved in the Alexis Wilson case, but he's involved in many other cases that involve police brutality, excessive force. He left from Dalton Police Station shortly after 2023, and he started in Oak Forest Police Department. There is a video, and I'm gonna show y'all while we're still waiting, 'cause they didn't start yet, okay? We're going to creep over to Burgundy Blue page, okay? 'Cause I was supposed to be making a video. Yup, I was gonna take her video and everything. Fuck it. Because she... If anybody who's helping Miss Cara, I just have to fuck with them. Not like that, but you know what I'm saying. So allegedly, not allegedly, Miss Cara went down to the police department, well, actually, the meeting that was in Oak Forest Police, I mean, area. I'm getting myself together. Oak Forest. And she protested. She basically let them know that she was the mother of Alexis Wilson and that this officer was involved in that particular shooting. And that brought light to the situation. And allegedly, now, I don't know if this is totally the truth. Allegedly, he gave his two-week notice. So let me just look to make sure that I am giving you the right information. I'm going to still research, because as you see, his name is still active under the Oak Forest Police Station. So I didn't wanna totally tell you guys that we gotta win and got that motherfucker to quit. But it's allegedly he gave a two-week notice. So we're gonna keep our eyes open to see if this updates, to give his end date. And we'll have another point under what we've been fighting for, and that is justice for my baby girl, justice for Miss Cara, baby girl, Miss Alexis Wilson. Let me put her on the screen, okay? We gonna fight to the end, alright? So that is a little bit of good news. It's still a little allegedly, but we're gonna keep that in mind. Also, I did update you guys this morning that Miss Mary Avant may be running for trustee, okay? They didn't start the meeting yet, y'all. They still sitting over here. The meeting supposed to start 15 minutes ago. Don't worry, I'm watching. Miss Mary Avant allegedly. So let me see if I can find that in Dalton Politics page while I put the meeting back up here for you guys. And I'm gonna look on Dalton Politics page and just go through my mail. I wanna say thank you guys for having patience, for Grace Levi, for loving me, for accepting me for who I am and getting this work. You know, we look at things differently, different, not afraid to ask questions. We don't play totally politically correct. We just play what's real is real. It is what it is, friend or foe. That's why people are kinda, you know, what it is, but they learn to love me. They have a lot of Louis Lacy documents here in the Dalton Politics group. I do gotta get caught up, so I'm gonna go look at all of the Lacy-Louis documents, and maybe I can read the case read to you guys. How about that? Because I know that's what I do here. I'm gonna see if I can pull it up. Can y'all hear? Let me see. Ain't nothing happening. Look at this. Uh-oh. Uh-oh, she there. Who called this board meeting, y'all? You think it was Hanyer or the trustees? They like, "Bitch, you gonna wait if it was the trustees." Yup. That's what he tried to do. Shout out to Miss Martin. That's what Perez tried to do. He trying to lay low, that piece of shit. And you know, guys, continue to speak in the comments. I'm gonna put y'all comments up here while I'm quiet, so y'all can have this conversation, okay? Y'all know y'all comments are very important here. This is how y'all express yourself. So when I'm quiet throughout this broadcast, just keep talking. Say what you wanna say, and I'm gonna be putting it on the screen. Turn the volume up? Okay. Well, it's up, boo. Ain't shit happening, that's why. Look at this girl. Oh, I got so much stuff to catch up on. Okay. The fuck? He's alive, y'all. Oh, that's Loretta. I'll tell you about Loretta soon, okay, Dion? Just know that Miss Loretta used to sleeping with the enemy. That's who Miss Loretta is, okay? She's married to the mayor of Phoenix, okay? Yeah, a little bit of crookedness going on here. You hear Mr. Roberts?
So that don't know what's going on here in Thornton Township. We had a board meeting about a week ago, or one, a week or two, and the board of trustees have created supports. Basically, it was a way to halt things in our township, stop services, stop events, day-to-day operations. And that's the part that a lot of you guys did not hear, did not see, because a lot of people be involved in the mess. You was too busy clapping, NBA, things of stopping progress in our township. Uh, as you read the orders, and this is why I was telling people to read, because at the end of the day, just like contracts, if you read the contract, sometimes you will miss things that you should have read. It is, it is a tyranny, but we did not, it's a certain people. Uh, basically, it stopped services here for a township, uh, effective Monday. Monday, the staff was not able to even buy ice cream for the seniors. They had an ice cream social. Um, it was held at Academy City location, and they cannot buy ice cream. Come on, make it make sense, y'all. So what I love about the staff is they gathered, they went in their own pockets and paid for the ice cream for the seniors. But these are the things I was trying to warn you about, and tell you what the board was trying to do, or no, what they did do with the orders, but no one wanted to hear, because you thought it was just a way to stop this danger, but it was a way to basically stop the services here at Thor Township. That's number one. Number two, uh, youth and family. That's another thing they stopped. Did y'all know that they were, y'all weren't able to feed our kids, our youths? So we have an after-school care program here for a township. We was not able to buy food for our kids. That's a program that people sign up prior to, um, school starting, and then what we do is we gonna pick their kids up from school, and we bring them to our Riverdale location, where we, meaning the township, that we're responsible for providing meals, snacks, or whatever it's called, for the day. And we have your kid for four hours. So we had a lot of angry parents that was upset about, um, the structures, the process. And, um, our word is our bond. It's all we have here for a township. Again, I'm repeating this. The Board of Trustees do not run a day-to-day township by putting ordinances and things in place, as I stated in the last meeting. You did not ask, um, the staff their opinion, you did not ask, uh, finance their opinion, you did not ask myself, me, the supervisor, my opinion of day-to-day and how it works, and what do the staff needs for. Um, you guys just made a law that really affected the entire township. But this are the parts that the news don't show you. These are the parts that you don't see unless you experience it. So some of the seniors, I see you in the, I'm listening, you experiencing, uh, at the Academy City location. So it just saddened my heart that you have to go through these things when you come to your township for help. It was not able to get the help that you truly, truly desire, and it's a lot more things that's going on. Uh, bingo, um, it affected our bingo. Uh, bingo, we do go into senior homes, so those that don't know what we do here for a township. Um, there was not able to be certain services, whether it was, uh, gift cards for a big bingo, whether it was products for a big bingo. So it was all these things that got stopped, uh, based off of the ordinances that was, uh, made by the Board of Trustees. So I just want you to understand, when people making laws, when people suggesting things, you should speak to everybody in making that law, and that did not happen. People are literally, uh, leading with feelings, emotions, and not with their minds. This is a fear, and you have to talk to your staff as relates to the day-to-day operation, so you will not hurt or hinder the day-to-day operation. These are the complaints that we had, these are the things that happened within the departments. I have the department heads here today, and they was gonna all speak to what I'm speaking to, uh, the issues that they had, uh, before them, and the issues that they overcame. So I thank y'all, because y'all really asked me, I give it up, I'm the department head, because oh, thank y'all, I appreciate y'all. Um, if y'all want, I don't know if you feel comfortable still speaking, I know we're gonna have a board meeting. Uh, hopefully the news play it. If you want to still say something about your department, uh, especially senior services with the ice cream, excuse you, excuse you. If you, if you wanna say something about, about it, you can, um, Hrcia, Tamika, y'all wanna get up and speak to the fact that they have ice cream social? Did you wanna do any saving? Y'all wait, okay, thank you. Alright, so they wanna wait, um, to speak to their thing, um, and then we'll go from there. So each department head has the opportunity to speak and tell you what's going on. Again, if you guys do, I want you to, there's the door. I've said that several times. Right now, this is not, this is not, this is not a cure that. This is me having my statements so that residents will know what's going on in the township.
Uh-oh. It's about to go down. Everybody walk out. Go ahead, Ms. Roberts, and Mr. Roberts. Look at the old people, like, I ain't going nowhere. Look at that old lady with that little bob, bob cut. Look at the lady with the bob cut, I'm like, I ain't going nowhere, I'm gonna get my damn bingo, I'm gonna get my big screens. Let's listen. Walk the hell, they all need to walk out on her ass.
So many, there's so many issues, guys, and there's so much chaos, and so much confusion. And people are all got an opinion. Sometimes you have to just sit still and listen to the other side. That way you can decipher what's right, what's wrong. When you just hear one side, you don't know. You hear one side and didn't get any other side of the truth, especially you dudes. I've always told you, come
Gwen, you being bad. Don't be calling Henry it out like that. Move it on.
I get another perspective, but you guys just write one narrative, and that's negative people. Because I get it, it's about ratings, but get the truth. I'm telling you what happened. I'm telling you what went wrong. I'm telling you that people made orders, and it hurt the township. My goal is to make sure I uplift our community. My goal is to make sure that people get the services that they need here at Thor Township. Since becoming your supervisor, I have turned the township around. Like I said, twenty percent only knew about Thor Township. Now, oh
And you're a hundred percent right. What we went over with the credit card statements and the bank statements, please look at that, guys, because my release with the bank statements, it was messed up. It was posted release at six PM, and it released in the middle of the night. So I didn't get a lot of, of spins on it. I'm gonna, I want you guys to watch that in detail, because I do think these department heads are doing all of this spending, okay? And for them to need the car to have an ice cream social that is monthly, and a bingo that is monthly, that's telling you that they're doing reckless spending, okay? We're gonna talk about how real businesses run when they have programs that are monthly, okay? Let's just listen to this broadcast.
Over eighty percent know Thor Township exists. Every single one of the department heads can tell you about services, tell you about increases, tell you about everything that we have helped them do here at Thor Township. People need to stop with the clickbait, people need to stop with the just hearsay, the he say, she say, it's not high school. But I want it to be a different narrative here for Thor Township, and I wanna showcase the good we do here.
Bingo is not a service.
Outshouted by all the negativity and all the confusion.
I agree with you. Bingo is not a service.
And then all the chaos agents, as most people call them, because people care to just create negativity. And we not with that. We lead with love. That's what I care about. Care about my community. I grew up in this community, and I wanna see it thrive. And under my leadership, it has been thriving. We are in surpluses when we hit deficits for the last seventeen years. We're trying to research and open them numbers up. That's the stuff y'all need to talk about, but we're not talking about that. Because everything's about a negative, uh, smear campaign, as I've said before. This is politics, this is what's going on right now. And everybody wanna sit here and just try to down a person that y'all can't beat, because at the end of the day, I'm all about the people. The people see me boots on the ground twenty-four seven. When y'all sleeping, y'all talking about me, I'm helping somebody, even the hateful. Y'all come to my door, I'm helping with your life, your gas, your water, your mortgage, your rent, helping you bury your loved one. I'm even helping you buy your medicine for those that need. So these are the
It's not you, Tiffany fucking Henry, excuse my language, because she pisses me the fuck off, acting like this money coming out of her pocket, and that she literally came up with these damn programs. So most of these programs are already set in stone. The position of Thornton Supervisor is to actually give out services, bitch. So if I was Thornton Supervisor, I'll be doing the same thing. You would be, okay? It's not your fucking services, it's Thornton. You are a funnel cake of services that goes through Thornton, not Thornton. I have learned that. This is what this is set up for. So she's not doing nothing special, guys. I just want y'all to know this here, okay? Nothing special.
Things that we could get here, but I wish the news would advertise that like they advertise the hate in our communities. Advertise the things that people really need in their household, so they'll know it's a better way, and it's an option, and it's not the end of the world. Hey, sometimes people see something on the news, and they say, man, I didn't have any hope, but now I have all the hope in the world, because now I never came across that I can get help with a service. And that number, seven oh eight, five nine six, sixty forty. Again, seven oh eight, five nine six, sixty forty, for here at Thor Township. You must be a Thor Township resident if you need any help with any of the services I just named. And again, if you want your kids to sign up for after-school, please sign them up, and you can see Avenue over there at the same number, seven oh eight, uh, five nine six, sixty forty. And they all have their own extension, I don't know them by heart, but make sure you just dial the number to get the services that you need. Uh, you call Tamika for GX, she helps with every single thing.
So she called this meeting, as per our audience member, because I was like, who the hell called this meeting, and they didn't show the fuck up? She called the meeting, and no one showed us, and now she's using it for time to grandstand and tell about her services that she gives to the people out of her damn pocket, okay? Let's finish listening.
One thing I'm real big on is feeding the community. We need food. A lot of times, people are sleeping on that when you go to grocery store. It's the food that's, but you guys have to know that Thor Township has a food pantry for you. So if you're interested in one food, you can go every single Wednesday, but it's like every thirty days if you're a resident of Thor Township. But on Wednesday, you can pick up a free food box from our Harvey location.
Ooh, don't do it, don't do it.
These are things I created because I care.
Now, y'all remember, bitch, you already created the food pantry, and it's spoiled. Don't get salmonella, y'all. Don't fuck about it, find out.
Don't nobody give themselves more work if they did not care. That's another thing y'all need to ask yourself.
Oh, my goodness. Drink the water, because you're lying. Go ahead, choke on your words, girl.
All the things that was placed in these ordinances and all the things that you see us doing, these are all things we created when we came in office. Because we really wanted to take on, um, responsibility of uplifting the community and showing them that, hey, we heard you, and we made a plan for it, and your plan matters to us. So all we are doing is showing you the love that you needed for over thirty years that you was not getting. Now, don't get me wrong, some people say, some people got it, some people didn't. It should not be that. It should be love for all. And right now, it's not. It's, it's targeted toward certain people, and I don't appreciate that. It needs to make sure that everybody gets the benefits here at Thor Township, because again, it's only five cents of your taxpayer dollars. They don't even tell you that, five cents, compared to what a community really charges on, on a tax levy. And I tell you, void it. A lot of times, people don't know, so they just go off of what they heard. Go for the information and learn for yourself, educate yourself. As they say, put it in a book, you will not find it. That is so true. We are so misled.
Shut the fuck up, this bitch act like she read. I'm sorry, I'm mad at her. I'm mad. Every time she talk, okay, I don't mean to call a black woman a bitch, but she get up off. This one right here? Fuck out of here. Fuck, girl, stop it. Put it in the book, you won't find it. You won't find it. You damn criminal.
With misinformation that I feel bad for my community, and that's why I stand in the fire, because I still want you guys to learn it, know it, and understand it, and know how to apply it. But half of the time, people got so much hate in their heart that they don't even wanna come and learn nothing, or understand what's going on. You just go with the status quo. And that ain't what we do here at Thor Township. We are one big family. Sometimes it's functional, but we one big family. So I just want people to understand that and to know that, because we are just people loving on people, and people helping each other. And that's what we gotta get back to those roots, because right now, that stuff is gone because of all the things that you see. Think about, kids don't even read books no more. Everybody on phone scrolling. That's all they do. And I want to change that narrative. People don't do penmanship no more. That's something else we created and put in the after-school program. We learn how to write and curse. We have people come in here and apply for a job and kidnap, I repeat, kidnap, sign their name, they write their name. It's a big difference, but they don't understand it because we took it out of the schools. Also, why, I care about that.
Fuck out of here, y'all. Let me find out, this bitch been watching my page. These some of the shits I talk about. I talk about dad being taken out of the school, a wild homeschool. I'm sorry, maybe I'm just crazy. I listen, I'm like, damn, these motherfuckers never talked like this, ever. Now you, now you can? Because you can't curse and write your damn self, Tiffany. You probably definitely can't read the Constitution. The fuck, she making me mad because she, she's representing something that she don't stand by, okay? What she saying, it sounds good, but she doesn't live it, talk it, or breathe it. No, no, she don't.
I was in my township. You know how many, uh, Hispanics that's in our community that cannot understand English and vice versa? So we
And let me let y'all know something. Y'all better be paying attention to what's going on with the migrants, no disrespect. If they ain't coming here legally, y'all motherfuckers better stand up, because they taking y'all services. This bitch already talking about, you know, the migrants that can't speak English? Woo, she trying to get another check. I'm gonna let y'all know that, um, states, towns, um, cities, they are receiving checks to house these migrants and take up the spaces out of the black community. I'm just throwing that out there. That's why they was at the DNC, fucking protesting, okay? Go ahead and think that the Democrat, Democrats doing you fucking well. My last two lives ago, I showed y'all what was gonna happen at that DNC and what they were planning, and y'all saw what the fuck happened down there, right? I said, let me just sneak it into the broadcast. Don't fall for the fucking hype. Don't fall for the hype, y'all. She talking bullshit.
We have to learn and teach our kids that, hey, here's a opportunity to learn something for free. You know, I was paid for, because that's how people complain, say, I don't have the funds to, to elevate myself or my kid. So my job is to give you the opportunity to be able to say, hey, I wanna take that place. You know how many seniors come to text savvy? How many people are down there literally learning how to use their devices, their phones, their computers, and they placing those things on their devices? That stuff matters. Because right now, as you know, if you ain't talked before, AI taking over. You have to learn how to utilize and how to, um, do things on your phone. We help you put Zoom on your phone to talk to a loved one in another state or country. We help you do, unfortunately, Facebook, Instagram, all the social media.
That's, that's all you fucking do is the social media. That was your main target for tech savvy for the seniors, to make sure that they could see you on social media. Stop it. And now they contest to Zoom meetings. You didn't care about them learning how to type? Okay, using how, how to use Word, how to use Excel. Are you teaching that? Is tech savvy teaching that? How to actually do Google searches and look up information for their fucking cell? I don't think you're teaching them that. Mm-hmm, that's what tech savvy is about. Booking them up to the social media so that they can see your buckethead ass.
Do all of that, but all that matters to, uh, growing communities, especially a senior base. And not only that, some students don't know how to do it, but, uh, I don't know, my father, she crossed circles around me on that time. But that's what they do. So all I'm saying is, we have to uplift each other and, and get rid of the nonsense and figure a way to work together. That's what we're missing. All the hooting, hollering, and pointing fingers and back and forth, enough of that, stop. Leave that outside. At the end of the day, policy is gonna be politics. Politics will rule the world. Everybody know that. Run for the seat, you want it, run for it.
Okay, so wait, we're gonna get to that. I'm just gonna get to some of y'all comments, because you know, she not that important. They not having a meeting. They probably did have permits four years ago, but you have to understand what they have going on. It's called inciting riots to change the narrative, to heighten it, to destroy black people property. They did that through the Black Lives Matter, took the damn protest and made it their own, and that's what I was talking about. Other people are coming to make this immigrant i- issue a big issue. And then the ones who are there just to be, how can I say, um, what do they call them, tyrants? That's what they're doing. So that's what I was talking about. No matter how long they had this shit set up, it's the people who show up. It's the people who get paid to be out there causing trouble. So that's what I was talking about. Um, um, and with this one, only Democrats push this agenda. I'm gonna say this, they do push the welfare agenda. I've noticed that. But the Republicans push the agenda too of doing for yourself, standing on your ground, but they are connected to a lot of big elite, big companies who are already sucked, most of all of the money out of our communities, control our communities, and at the end of the day, they are still the haves, and we are the have-nots. So I'm not totally with, you know, like, oh, well, let's run to Republicans, because them motherfuckers say, y'all, y'all blacks better protect yourself. And they, 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 like, okay, for instance, I say Trump did put some things out there that gave us initiative, like I said, to start business and things, but literally, the AI hacking, the scams, you know, our social security numbers was just fucking hacked. All of that, I think, is connected to a lot of the check and balance systems that Trump pulled off. He, he pulled a lot of check and balance systems that Obama put in to control the bankers, the mortgage companies, and these rich and elite, okay? Now, I'm not saying Obama wasn't down for the cause, but they be picking and choosing what their agenda is to make them, make us be with them. So I just want y'all, y'all not to be blinded, okay? Don't just choose the side because it's a side. Choose it because of what they gonna offer you in reality, and what can be applied to you and triple down into your community. That's what we don't really see. That's what we really don't see. Let's keep playing.
Always say, but don't sit here and tear down the
Oh, my god.
of what we have built and created here for a township, because it's worth it. Don't sit here and put negative or dishonest comments out about Thor Township, because that's not true. That's saying that you govern this, this body like I do, but you constantly tearing it down with negativity. And that's not right with no facts. I always say that. Like, the facts, Lou, they never do. You just report what somebody said. Because they said you reported. That don't make it right. Then somebody have to defend itself.
Look, I gotta put that up there. Y'all say, y'all like Hannibal is hungry bingo game better than hers. Well, Hannibal blocked my ass too. The nigga was a little sus- The nigga was a little suspect, y'all. I'mma keep it real. When adulting people tried to block me cuz I knew some shit about Dalton, he fucking did too. I don't know if I'm still blocked cuz I ain't go over the check on a nigga page. But y'all better pay attention to some funny acting people cuz you be thinking they not connected and shit all of a sudden, every. I'm still a little tight about that, y'all. Y'all not a little tight. Oh, why they gonna do Grace like that? Because I knew some shit. And I said I was gonna tell the people, y'all don't fucking tell on y'allself. And guess what started happening? New changes started coming to Dalton as far as trying to get different policies put in. And a lot of those policies was the things that I was talking about. People like, don't give yourself the credit. I give my motherfuckers self the credit cuz I was talking about shit that other people were not talking about. I was going into the detail. We were talking about the spending. We were showing, um, how Henry was messing up in certain perspectives, okay? And we have a lot of different videos when it comes to Dalton and Thornton. Honestly, we were one of the first that talked about Melanie's Fitness Center. That shit got me mad. So I love the fact that they went after them. So all I'm saying is y'all keep your eyes on the motherfucking prize because some of the people that y'all truly love are not unbiased as you may think. Shout out to Hannibal. I had to put you on my motherfucking page since they wanna talk about you. I ain't mad at you, but you shouldn't have blocked me. I was born in Brooklyn, alright? Nigga, nobody ain't gonna block me. Shout out to Hannibal. Y'all know I be, I be on some bullshit. That's why y'all miss me. Let's finish listening.
Everything don't warrant a response. Cuz people like, right or strong, let's go. We don't do that. We giants. Giants don't go to every little thing somebody says, but that's not what we do.
Yes, you do.
We're too busy. We do not fickle with people. We do not talk about them. We talk about things, uh, uplifting the community, rebuilding, redirecting. That's what we talk about, I mean, leaders, true leaders. Giants and leaders talk about progress, opportunity. That's what we, we vision it. We don't do all of the back and forth, the chat. We don't do that. But it's sad when I see older people than me doing that.
Javah.
It's sad when I see people that I shouldn't look up to for wisdom.
She, uh, well, you know, we gotta stop listening to her. I'm trying to make it through. You know she been talking this whole motherfucking time? She ain't never stopped. We, we three minutes lagging. You know, we eight minutes lagging behind the lob. And fuck it, ass, fuck it, ass still talking. She terrible. Listen to this. Javah, don't talk to him. It's not that serious. I just talk this shit. I could care less. These people don't care about me. I pay my bills, they pay their bills. They got their own agenda, I do too. My agenda is to build a long-lasting relationship with you guys. I'm not just a content creator, so we not on the same page. I'm not a broadcaster. Okay, I'm here to liberate, get some keys, y'all open the motherfucking doors and y'all run through them bitches. Don't talk to him about me. We not on the same level. We different people. But I love you, Javah. I can give a damn at this point. God got the final say. You know, I ride or die to the end with him.
Being high school, I don't even call it no more cuz it's so beneath. Like, stop. You have to be the example. You cannot sit here and yell at us and say this or say that in the future. Listen, we're not gonna listen to you because you're not the example that we want to follow. You have to lead with some kind of gumption, some kind of direction, something that matters to us, especially in the black and brown communities, which is always, always the last to get anything. And all I did when I came here was bring attention to things that was needed, which is opportunity, which is progress, which is uplifting the youth, which is helping the senior bases. Y'all know how many seniors in the senior home that y'all don't go see? Y'all know how many people that the call center calls every day? And just talks to them. They come from the phone for hours. Sometimes, hey, come on, your phone, your phone. Hours because they along, cuz they just wanna help, cuz somebody just called their house. These are the problems in our community. These are the things we should be talking about, but we're not because we too busy pointing fingers and fiddling.
Oh, you good, Javah.
She say stuff. If y'all say things are going on, let the process take its course. But until then, pay attention to what's really being developed and produced in your community. And that's people loving on people. It's a shame that they stopped Bingo. Pay attention.
Pay attention. Pay attention. We can't give them free gifts.
Bingo is really, really big in our community. It's a way that people get to come in and socialize to one another. But people don't look at it like that. Y'all look at it, meaning they pronounce those that, that's positive with the hateful and the spiteful ones. They look at it as, oh, you just giving gifts out. It's not that. It's all about bringing communities together from all over. All seventeen of our cities come together on the one roof. All you had to do, Lou, is go downstairs and you would've saw what we saw. You would've felt what we felt. But you chose not to go downstairs and get that footage and talk to those people about what it is that Bingo means to them and how it affects their lives and how some of them made friends with people that, say, they live in South Island. They made friends with people in Homewood, Lynnwood, Lynnwood, but y'all ain't talking about that. These are the parts that y'all missing. These are, are the fruits of the labor that, that really matters to a community. These are the roots, and I just want us to show a different narrative. And I am okay with talking to those that want to show the different narrative. I don't talk to the news because y'all so negative. Y'all want sad stories. I don't like. You don't let nobody tell their story without you cutting up, chopping up, adding this in, putting this in it to make it sell for what you wanted for. That's not what we do at Thorntown Township. Just like all this I'm saying, right? A pressure, go cut it, chop it, and then make a segment, and that's what don't come on the news, I guarantee you. I just wanna show the people-
We really not.
That it's more to the story than what you see.
Jesus Christ.
For those that know me personally or know me, cuz I hung there, remember, everybody else flew in. Y'all know that I'm rooted in the community, like literally grew up in the village of Dawson. That's why I stayed in that choir over there because I ran and I won as a trustee in twenty thirteen. I've been a trustee for two times, won both my seats back to back. Then after that, I ran for mayor, won that by eighty-two percent of they hate on, fans flag. So that means y'all wanted to change. And then God blessed me and placed me here in twenty twenty-two, becoming the first female, you know, this African American.
Yo, I gotta laugh at that, babe. That's what I was saying, yo, she talking mad. The video is over. The livestream was from, um, um, what is it, Conscious Smoker? Whatever his name is. Critical Smoker, no disrespect. I already gave you a shout out. The video over, and this broad been talking for thirty fucking minutes straight. I thought I could talk. Nigga said, she still talking? What kind of drugs does, uh, what kind of drugs does this? She can't pronounce words that a kindergarten can do. Listen, my baby going through it. She stressing. Okay, she stressing and she tired. Let's listen to the next. How fucking much longer? We got nine more minutes of this shit, okay? I'm behind the other lobs because I had to stop. Let's finish listening to her bullshit.
Supervisor, other lobby township in the state of Illinois. That's what all the hate is all about. It's all about, your super mayor became too popular too quick. I did not go through, uh, the boys' club. I am not your status quo. I, I'm so rare, so unique, and that's why everybody got-
Wow. Wow.
Now, stand in the fight because I want the boys and girls of the next generation to see what it looks like to come out of controversy and to come out of all the hatred unscathed. Because at the end of the day, only God can fix it. Cuz right now, we are fighting experience.
And you said it. That's what I told you. This is the doctrine of the devils. You said it, Deion. She is a true demon. She makes positivity with her negative criminal ways. That is a demon. That's beyond just being bad behavior. When you can literally know you're lying, stealing, cheating, deceiving, and then you can talk freely about God, you supposed to be ride or die. You supposed to be like, what this? I'm on the other side. This is just wicked. So I agree with you.
Spiritual battle, whether y'all believe it or not, we are, it's a lot of demons, and we saw half the demons got up and left. And everybody that really wanted to hear the story stayed to hear a different side, a different narrative. And those that know the truth, which I don't know about my staff, they sitting here and I wanna say nothing. But I was trying to get up and speak when I said, nobody wants to listen. Maybe when y'all said, it might be a little different because you telling me it, and I'm, I'm saying it to the public, but you gotta see. So now they understand where y'all coming from as regards to all of your departments. Because at the end of the day, they say, we ain't signed up for this. We don't wanna be on the news. We on this, and I get it. Cuz that's a lot. That's a lot of pressure. That's a lot on a person. And that's what y'all starting to realize, what you're doing to regular, everyday people.
So she's blaming her criminal behavior on us. You hear what she said? If y'all stop fucking reporting these people, they won't be stressed out. Not, if I don't stop spending the money incorrectly, not controlling what's going on in the township correctly and not actually, um, bankrupting Dalton, then, you know, it's not me, it's y'all. Y'all, remember, just keep recording people up here. Y'all got the YouTubers up here. They, y'all up here for no damn reason. Y'all done lost y'all mind. Grace Levi drove all the way to Illinois. Get what you need. You need the headphones?
I know. No.
Okay. I'm borrowing my nephew headphones, y'all. Go get what you need. Um, I wouldn't have drove all the way to Illinois if it was just us making up shit. But this is, this is what Miss Henry got to say. Let's finish listening cuz it's so sad how she have a deflected behavior. It's called deflectiveness, okay? And gaslighting, okay? And narcissism, mm-hmm, all of that. And I can use that cuz I'm a healthcare official. Tell me I'm not. With the grace of God, protect y'all here in Jersey. These motherfuckers crazy.
They mental. Y'all should worry about that. They have families, they have kids, they have loves. No one cares about that. You gotta just attack, attack, attack. And that's why a lot of people don't come support me or don't speak up because they afraid of being attacked.
They afraid of you.
And that's not cool. I keep telling you, you gotta remember, we are people.
I'm gonna have to replod this shit that she's saying. I just told you, I have like three people in my inbox. And they will not come up and talk live, but they will give me the information. And they also will not, they don't wanna be caught recording cuz they don't wanna be in the middle of the shit. I have met elders, older women, face to face, who have told me this. And other Dalton residents on my inbox have told me this. So would you please stop saying that it's us? Because they're coming to us with the stuff, but it's you that they're afraid of. It is you, Tiffany Henyard, that they're afraid of. And this is a damn shame that she is leveling up with the doc, the devil doctrines. Thank you, Deion, for calling it out.
At the end of the day, when you sick, when you ill, when you in that hospital bed, guess who by your side?
Henyard, Henyard.
Hope it's your love, but it ain't for hate. It ain't for people that you catting with every day. You wait, don't see. Call them and ask them to help you bury a loved one. Call them and ask them to help you with something for your keep. I guarantee you not gonna get no support from them. But everybody not a fan of the devil or there's something hate. It's said that faith news and, 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 uh, negative news, uh, travel, faith has to do anything positive. I never seen nothing like it. And I am the first, I see the constant-
I'm sorry, y'all. I can't. I don't think we can make it through all of this. This is too long, okay? Now, I think I'm gonna have to stop. I'm gonna listen to the last few minutes because literally, there's no meeting. Bitch just called this into gaslight us, okay? I'm glad I went live tonight. Get me back into my live mode. I'm almost there, y'all. Let's listen to, I had to fast forward this cuz I can't fuck. And then you see this jigger right here, this, this baller putty. He ain't moved not yet. He didn't move out yet. He looked just like the bug guy from Men in Black. He looks just like, y'all know Men in Black, the guy who was driving the bug bus. He was the main character. Mm-hmm. There you go. There you go. Trying to capture the galaxy.
Compromise with anybody. We ask questions. We say what is needed. We call lawyers. Think about, y'all gave Robert Hunt finance director. Y'all made him the car holder. As much money as he made, he ain't have CPA. As much money as he made, why would he run around all day, all day, to go to the stores or different departments?
He don't need to go to the stores for different departments, okay? What they need to do is go to his office and sign the fucking card out. Thank you. They listened to me, y'all. That was my suggestion. Have one or two car holders, one car holder and one or two cars. Thank you, Dalton trustees. I know y'all watching this little old page right here. I swear to God, they are, y'all. I just said this, only one person needs the credit card and they need to sign out on a ledger of what they're taking out, how much and why, and it needs to go with the policies and protocols, okay? So if anything happens, the fall person is going to be them and Hunt because Hunt should be checking it every motherfucking week or every day if he got to. Now, that's how you check shit. Go ahead, trustees. I'm so proud of you. I'm so proud of you.
When do he do his job? This how y'all gotta look at that. Other than that, y'all stay all CPA is that kind of money and let them just run around and stalk people. It's too many gangs.
He's not running to the store. You see how she tried to manipulate the situation like he's gonna be running to the store? She is a gaslight. I can't stand her. Let's finish. I'm trying to get through this.
Whereas each department head had their own car, was, was held accountable for their car, cuz their name on it. So whoever used their own car, they were supposed to scrub the items. And if it's something wrong, point it out. Something you don't like, where is it? Like, stop. It's just too much mess. It has to change, guys. But it changed with us. And I'm only talking to y'all like this because it's gonna target the opportunity to say something without all the interrupters and that paper crash.
You a fucking liar. She a liar. You know how many times we told her gaslight for ten minutes straight? In every meeting, she gets to talk for over five, ten minutes, so she just don't hear herself or it's just not enough. Because we hear it and we be disgusted. We can't even hear, we don't even wanna listen to your voice right now. But we, we, we just gonna give you the floor, okay? Fucking hot tamale. Y'all hot ass, hot in the pants, allegedly. Well, you have three of your buddies around you, you know what I'm saying? Uh-huh. Who they, who they say is? Smith? Catch a dog, Smith was her boyfriend? Then we have, um, Keith Woods? And who else? What Keith Woods? What's his name? Mr. Kamal Woods? They all, they all was messing with it. And it's somebody else too, right? It's somebody else. It's three of them that been around a hot ass, okay? You, you think somebody gonna listen to you? You think somebody gonna listen to you? Somebody, we ain't gonna listen to you cuz look how you handling yourself. We don't wanna hear it. No. What it is, is that not only do you handle yourself out of pocket, but you're a whole damn liar and a thief. Okay, I'd rather have somebody pop off and run they mouth and tell the truth but not have all the rest of the fucking qualities you have, missy.
Give a statement out, just to tell y'all what's really going on.
Whatever.
And show y'all. And some of the stuff that you can see a little more comfortable, saying a little stuff. The vote ain't wanna go to the mic. I'm gonna go to the mic, go to the mic. No, no. I get it, but you can't let the little, the hateful and the spiteful ones stop you from giving your message. Still put your message out. I still do regardless of what people say, just so people can get another perspective of what's going on here at Thorntown Township.
Yeah, that was what it is. Shut up.
I'm thankful for my, uh, community. I'm thankful for my residents that support me, love on me, send me emails, thank you. I, I love all that about you guys for just keeping your super mayor grounded.
Oh, my God.
Thank y'all because it's tough. Yes, it is. But at the end of the day, God gives the test to his strongest souls. You know, I give you more than you can bear, and that's the purpose of the test, so you can have a testimony there. No testimony without the test. And you have to go through the process sometimes, and you have to go through the storm. But you gotta keep your eye ahead and not on the storm, cuz sometimes you get caught in the storm, you check your eye out, God. So I try to encourage people to, uh, keep going, keep moving, don't give up. Uh, it's life's end of the tunnel. I try to tell people to have tunnel vision, just like those horses. I don't know if y'all into horse races or none. They got complainers on the side so they can't look left or right, so they can't get distracted in a Rene race. It's the same concept. Y'all have to do the same. If anybody has been any other type of, whether it's former government or management, keep fighting, keep going, especially to the-
Okay, that's enough. That is enough. That is enough. I lost my mind, y'all. I, that's why I lost a lot of y'all on this damn video. Like, there, she still let this motherfucker play? Look, y'all can't say that I don't, I'm not trying to be biased here, okay? Thank you. I love you too. Keep reporting. She is talking like she is their mother. Did she come from a family of talkers? Hell, yeah. Okay, let's give this his, uh, other channel showing the meeting, okay? So, Mr. Holloway, why the hell did you come and say that? If you wanna see it, go look. Y'all know how I am. You know, I give shout outs when I want to, but knock that shit off, okay? People over here, because they love Grace Levi in the commentary, okay? You can watch this anywhere, but you here for the commentary. So, Javah, I wanna say shout out to you because I was gonna go live last night and talk about this with some blow. But I already told y'all that Carmen was gonna turn on her. I told y'all that she was gonna turn on already, so this is just an official broadcast that she is announcing that, bitch, I'm a whistleblower, protect me. I guess that's what she's saying, like, don't, don't treat me like the others, protect my ass. So let's just listen to this broadcast. Shout out to Javah for keeping me up to date on this cuz this is what I wanted to, you know, just tap back on cuz we, we did talk about this. We saw the change coming months ago. The YouTubers are doing, we got like two, three up on mainstream. I'm just gonna keep it real. You know we do.
WGN investigates has learned South suburban politician Tiffany Henyard has lost another key ally. Until recently, Henyard enjoyed Yonara's support on the Thornton Township Board. But now trustee Carmen Carlisle says, after trusting Henyard and remaining silent, she will be a whistleblower against Henyard. Carlisle released a statement to WGN that reads in part, "For the past two years, Henyard has manipulated employees, vendors, and residents using her position to increase her influence." "For the past two years, Hanyard has manipulated employees, vendors, and residents using her position to increase her influence, all while projecting a false image of success funded by the hardworking taxpayers of Thornton Township and the village of Dalton."
Yep.
Hanyard shows no accountability or conscience for her actions against employees or taxpayers. Hanyard has denied wrongdoing and claims her opponents are out for what she calls clickbait. Tomorrow at nine, tune in for exclusive new reporting on Hanyard's spending that she tried to keep secret.
Well, that's supposed to be coming up, I guess, at nine o'clock. That's ten o'clock my time. But let's just break down this, this, um, comment that Ms. Carmen made. For the past two years, Hanyard has manipulated employees, vendors, and residents using her position to increase her influence, all while projecting a false image of success. Let's just talk about, I'm a business person, I'm a business person, and everybody who have done their research have seen that Tiffany Hanyard Burger Hunt went down the hole. Her real estate business is not existing. Um, yeah, and maybe the houses that they purchased, the family has that. What else business does she have? I definitely, I know the Burger Hunt and the real estate business. Anybody knows about the other businesses that she have done that has been successful? That will warrant her to have such an image? Because just before she became mayor, oh, no, let's just say just before last year, because even the first year of her being mayor, Tiffany was dusty as hell. Dusty. Let's just, I, let me, let me just show y'all, uh, dusty. She was a dusty ass, nobody putting makeup on her, regular smegala ass, black girl, looking terrible. I'm just keeping it real, okay? Let's just go back, because she, she, I'm about to show y'all. About, hold up. Yeah, I'll go back to that, but I just wanna show y'all because what she tried to portray is after she started stealing all the money. Okay? Because she should have been looking like this when she first became there. Oh, no, we gonna go back, because I'm, I went through this shit since two thousand twenty-one. I was like, wait, that's why people was talking about, oh, she beautiful, bitch. Makeup magic, that's a lot. Now, right, even right here, October two thousand and twenty. And as it relates, this is where you're gonna see some changes in her face, okay? This is where you see Tiffany starting getting a little makeup, you know, getting a little style coming in, you know what I'm saying? You know, her boyfriend owns a clothing store, Mr. Woods. I was looking at his shit. So the other day, she had a hat on that had a flight. It's like a flag, a black and white flag that looked like a paper plane. That is their logo. So she trying to get her little style up, but let's just go back. Let's just go back, okay? Now, this is the real motherfucking Tiffany before, okay? You know, I wanna go back, because she was looking even more dusty. This one was a regular one. Miss Dun, look at her. This is Tiffany, okay? With her dusty ass. Now, this was the epitome of success. When I got one more picture, I'm gonna show you where she even looked worser, and I'm gonna make a word up as I go, worstest. Okay? Wait, let's, let's go back. And then look at Todd from the damn floor talking about, she did. Look, this is when, this is when the bitch became mayor. Look at her. She came in looking like this. Okay, this is when she told them, no spending till I get in. I remember this video, bitch was talking shit. She was like, nobody do this, nobody do that. This is when she was coming off the whole stroll a little bit, little bit. See what I'm saying? Look at her, bubbly ass eyes. I'm a hater. I don't like her. So all of that, um, yeah, she definitely was perpetrating a fraud as though she was, um, you know, the epitome of an excellent businesswoman. And we could just show you just by her appearance that that may have not been the truth. Now, I'm not saying everybody who rich gotta be looking all daughter, bitch. With her case, she did a change, okay? Now, me, I'm gonna say this. I'm be rich. Me too. I'll be rich. But I, you ain't gonna see much changing on me. I ain't gonna put all that motherfucking makeup on my face. I'm gonna be the same Grace Levi, coming up this mother, looking like with braids, probably with some flip flops in my, I'm gonna be on some Bill Gates shit. I ain't gonna be on no Tiffany shit, okay? So that's where you know people perpetrated a fraud. And that's what she did. That's when people got that mouth to get the gas, then they make theyself look nice, and then everybody fall for the bullshit. Then somebody like come, like me, come my damn flip flops, and shit, don't even know a motherfucker got a pocket full of money. I'm just playing. I don't, not right now, but maybe one day. Anyway, so here we go, back to her statement. So this was a persona in a projection of false image of success funded by the hard work of the taxpayers of Thornton Township and the village of Dalton. Running through that money? They get pay me my money? That's not being funny though, but she did. She did terrible. And all of the things that they were buying, that's what I'm saying, where is she putting it at? Like, where is it going? Do she live in Dalton, y'all? For real, for real? Y'all need to start investigating to see, she probably lives somewhere with a big ass mansion. I, I don't think Hanyar live in Dalton. I'm not falling for it. And then it says, Hanyar showed no accountability or conscience for her action against employees or taxpayers. She don't give a fuck. And, and, and that shows in how she even handled Alexis Wilson. Alexis Wilson situation and many other situations where if she don't wanna hear it, she ain't gonna look at you, she ain't gonna show you no respect, she's not gonna acknowledge you. She's not a human being to me. Hanyar is not a human being because you gotta have a conscience. I mean, damn. Like, you, literally, you have people begging for you to pay attention to something. She put her motherfucking head down. She put her head down like she don't care. So, that's Hanyar, Miss Monster. Um, I think that is going to be the synopsis of this live. We went over today. This bullshit ass meeting, okay, we just gonna keep it real, this BS ass meeting that she called just the grandstand, okay? Let me put y'all comments up there. Y'all know y'all are the epitome of this live. You know, y'all comments mean the most. That's why I put it up there. As long as y'all ain't disrespectful, acting crazy, we gonna put it up there, okay? Say what you want to say. Tiff, oh, Tiff, you messed up. Bingo, you do the same thing as a news reporter. Tiff, stop lying on, it's supposed to be God. But look, this is what I'm saying. That's, this is messed up. She's trying to make it seem like they're trying to take away these services when they're literally just trying to take control of the services. And that's what I wanted to highlight. Thank you for bringing it up. Let's just clarify, I don't think the trustees are taking away the services. They're trying to get control of the services. Let's also highlight that if this is a standing, running activity every single month, there should be a budget for it. Bingo don't cost a lot to run. You got your speakers, you got your place, you got your bingo shit already. You already saw, y'all, let me go, go to my page if y'all did not see it in the community page where I, um, it was a picture of basically, um, Hanyar's ass. Or it looked it like, it looked it like Thornton Township downstairs room that had all these big screens and shit. Y'all ain't see that, it's on my community page and we about to show you right now. My thing is, where are you getting this money from? Who gave you the authority to actually do that? That is so disrespectful. This bitch is buying screen, big screen TVs. The seniors, put on your, put on your glasses. Okay? You, I'm, I'm not about to play with them. I'm not happy. They over here trying to get them big screen TVs, and they don't motherfucking need it. Let's show you the picture of allegedly. Oh, this is possibly Ms. Mary Avant. She's running for Thornton trustees. Um, this has been shared around, so I wanted to share with you guys. Have I heard her make a formal announcement? No. But because I think she's a no-nonsense person, I don't think that this is up for play. I, I do think this is true, so we're gonna keep following up, wait until she make a formal announcement, and I can share it with you guys. Um, this was the announcement for Alexis Wilson. Um, hmm, look at her. Oh, she make me mad. Shout out to Ms. Carla. Love you, love you, and keep up the good fight because you went down there to represent yourself to the Oakwood Police, um, um, Oakwood, um, Live Board Meeting to tell them about Officer Perez. And I know it took a lot for you to continue to fight three years later, so I wanna send love to her because we, we with you, girl. We with you. All right, so let's get to this. This is what I wanted to ask. What is this? I have to say this in my Haitian voice. What is this? So you're telling me that she's, this is what Hunt need to go buy? This is what they need to buy every month? You talking about big screen TVs, Glinders and shit every month? This is what the seniors need? They will get gift cards from my black ass? And one, once a, it gotta be Christmas time, it gotta be a holiday for somebody to be trying to get a big TV like this. I'm not stingy, but I'm budget worthy, okay? I'm gonna feed you, you gonna eat doing bingo, you gonna have fun, you gonna get a little gift card, you gonna entertain, you gonna meet some people, and you gonna go home. But this right here? Tell me, is this acceptable, guys? Please. Please tell me. This don't make no damn sense. All right, what else I got up here? All right, let me see, let me see. Look, this is them trolling on Dalton Politics. If y'all haven't seen, please go to Dalton Politics, and they have a uncensored, I think uncensored pop, Dalton Politics, I think I showed y'all, um, they are off the hook. Look at Thick Leg Lacey. Are they out there plotting, and somebody was getting on, they was like, we didn't know that Lacey was the same height as Hanyar. That's fucked up, because you know Hanyar is short. I think me and her probably like the same height. I'm like five-two, five-three. So if this nigga is five-two, five-three, imagine the size of his balls. Let me shut up, y'all. Why did I say that? I'm being bad, y'all. I'm being bad. I'm gonna, I'm being bad. I'm sorry, y'all. It's probably ten size, the size of his leg. Probably got prostate issues and shit, the way he walk. All right, so this is what we wanna do. Um, if I can come back at nine PM my time, I'm on Jersey time, I'm gonna set up for another live. What I wanna do is do the, um, Dewayne Crasher case. To see, it's twenty pages, that's it. I'm gonna see, can I set that up for you guys? Also, what did they say? It was, um, don't give my butt. Uh, it was, it was three cases. Oh, 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 Fenea case. The Duke's case. Let's see if I can pull up the Duke's case today, okay? And if we could read these two cases today, give me till nine o'clock. I wanna see, can I get this set up for you guys, okay? And the reason why I don't have to keep explaining it to people because I like the AI reader, because it makes the broadcast more easier for me, okay? And also, I get to, um, like, I stop and I react, so it's just a little different. When I read the whole damn twenty page, twenty-four pages and so long, I be tired. My body be tired. The dyslexia kick the fuck in, and then y'all be like, why she mix up the words, bitch, because I'm tired. My neurotransmitter said, that's enough. So I be having to preserve my energy because I work a lot, like today. What I told you I was doing, I was researching to see if Officer Perez is actually still at that police station. How would I find out where these police are? And that's what I've been working on just before I went live. So let me save my brain power. We're gonna get into these two cases at nine o'clock. That's my word. Let me get it together, charge up my speaker, do what I have to do. And we're going to get to it. So before we do that, y'all know what I'm gonna do? Y'all know what I'm about to do. We gonna sign off. And we gonna sign off with some good music. I wanna thank you all first for being here with Grace Levi, because this was literally an improv live. And I just jumped on, and y'all be in it. Y'all be in it. Javar, I love you. Javar's, I'll miss you. What the hell? Don't be a hater, get caught up in that bitch, and better let, let my people go. He stopped. He like, don't go down there, he ain't get in trouble. Nah, I'm be in and out, and I'm gonna let y'all know before I go, because I'm definitely not gonna be able to make any postable live. I'm not going down there with no motherfucking equipment. I'm not going down there with no, nothing. This is gonna be me, some old ass clothes and my Bible. That's what I'm gonna bring to Haiti, y'all. So when I do go, I'm holding on, y'all. I'm gonna let y'all know, so. I thank you, Javar, for, for checking on me. You like, yo, where my peoples at, yo? Where my peoples at? Don't fucking do her like that. I love y'all, and I'm gonna see y'all at nine o'clock, okay?
Yeah. Hatred and envy, don't let it tempt me. I move defensive. Evil offends me. I year up in it. We come from trenches. I'm in this sacred place of the most high you can offend me. Hamachi, I keep it many mansion. That's where my rent be. Father helped me overcome. People who I used to look up to, they turning foes for nothing. Father, you my strength and you my courage. I feel bold for something. I wanna feel your spirit on my body like it's close or something. Put my vision in your one direction like it's froze or something. I can feel the hatred in their heart is like a warm something. Yeah, they full of nerves like my hands, from my toes or something. No nervous system, but you know I kill it like I'm holding something. Stay in my lane. Anyway, I spin it like I bowl or something, as if I need them for my elevation, like they rope or something.
Every election. So now, because they can't beat me, they gotta do this smear campaign to convince public opinion that I'm bad for them.
Should say two elections. You were first elected in two thousand twenty-one?
No, twenty thirteen was my first election for trustee. I was a trustee. I said where they are. That's why I know the law.
Elected mayor two thousand twenty-one.
Yes.
Terms four years?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, plans of running for reelection?
I'm running for both my seats. And I'm gonna win them.
So, and when is the election for Thornton Township?
Twenty twenty-five.
So those elections are the same time?
They are.
Bullshit. A bullshit, a bullshit.
The real estate market often seems like a distant world where only an elite of experts is successful. In a time of so much uncertainty in the air and bad news, realist investing can seem intimidating. But today, I wanna tell you that if you make the right decision today, you can enter the real estate market from the back door. Bad credit record? No credit at all? Do you dread the idea of having a home loan? Do you dream of owning investment properties? You are in the right place and right time because we have created a program, which is a tax lien and deed investment online course of only fourteen hours. This course is specially designed for people like you who have big dreams. You will learn at your own pace and everything from your home computer. This is your chance. Join our membership for nineteen point nine nine dollars a year. What are you waiting for? Visit our website, primetimehomebuyerbuyback.org, and sign up today for course access.